Well, out there in the Eugene area after this ice storm that we've experienced. And that's the reason we're here today is to have a discussion about the situation in the Keanee. We have with us, well, I'll just read the order. We have an order before us from the Sheriff's Office. It's Order 16-12-16-1. It's a matter of declaring a local emergency as a result of the December 14th, 2016 ice storm. We have with us today many people, but I'm going to turn it over to Linda Cook, our Emergency Management Program Manager. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you Chair and Commissioners. As we consider this recent storm event, I have three goals for our meeting this morning. One is to provide you with a comprehensive overview of the situation so that you, as our local elected officials, can have good situational awareness and also to inform you as you make the decision whether or not you would like to declare a local emergency. I'd like to, as part of this meeting, also explain the purpose of the local emergency declaration and how it relates to state and federal declarations because what we're doing today is a little bit different from what we have done in the past. And I would also finish up by requesting that the Board go ahead and make a local emergency declaration if you are so inclined to do so. As we step through this, I will be presenting situational awareness for the county overall. We have, as you know, our Director, Tim Elsie, here. He will go into detail about what's happening for Lane County as an agency, and I will be providing again kind of that broader overview perspective. As you know, the onset of the storm impacts set in on December 14th, late in the afternoon, and they continue through the night. We had massive ice accumulation on trees and power lines throughout the county. I don't know whether you're aware of this or not, but ice is far more problematic to us than snow. Snow is much easier to cope with. The ice wreaks havoc on our trees, and of course, trees and limbs fall down just all over the county, almost on a continuous state of just constant falling, creating a lot of road hazards. We didn't have a lot of ice accumulation on the roads themselves. In fact, it was very odd to be out there and see it raining, and yet all the trees were frozen. So our roadways were not an issue with regard to ice, but they were definitely impassable and hazardous as a result of falling trees and downed power lines. What we've learned from previous events from the utilities, that ice brings them to their knees. It brings down their lines, it takes down their poles. Ice is far more treacherous and problematic for the utilities than snow is. So the ice is our big issue. At this point, like I said, I'm going to talk about the utilities and the cities and the special districts, but at this point, because we're talking about Lane County, I want to turn it over to Tim to talk about in detail how it's impacted Lane County's Public Works operations.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Farr. Can I acknowledge that we do have an E-Web Commissioner in the room with us today also.
Oh, wonderful.
And I'd also like to recognize Sheriff Trapp is with us this morning and also Michael Coles, our elected assessor.
Good morning. This has been a challenging event for our crews with hundreds of trees down, many in power lines, we've had transformers exploding. The event was unfolding at night on the evening drive home, and there were a lot of things that came together, making this a very challenging event, but our crews and the leadership have honestly done a tremendous job. During the event, we've responded to more than 500 calls in a 24-hour period. We've involved our entire road vegetation, sign crews in the Eugene, Manita, Dexter, and Cottage Grove areas, and also received help from employees from the Florence shop. As the event unfolded, we even had employees who had gone home from the day who called us back to see if they could come back in and help. Wednesday, all day, we watched the event hover and not manifesting itself until late afternoon. We responded to isolated calls, but the weather was right at the cusp of warming up or cooling down, and this event could have gone either way. It could have been fairly insignificant, or it could have turned into the event that it did. By late afternoon, it was clear that it was going to be at least a moderately severe event, and Orange Schumacher, the Road Maintenance Division Manager, made the decision to open up the Public Works Emergency Operations Center, or EOC. Warren and Keith McGarvey, the Assistant Road Maintenance Division Manager, worked the phones with Mike Russell, our Parks Division Manager. He was there to provide any assistance in whatever way he could. He was watching the weather patterns and trying to predict how big the event was going to be. Linda Cook, the county's Emergency Manager, also came to the EOC, and she and I worked together to determine the message to send out to the NOOBS organizations and eventually decided to activate the Emergency Alert System. We also worked to determine if there was a need for an emergency declaration by the Board of County Commissioners, and Linda crafted the draft resolution. As the event unfolded Wednesday night, we began getting reports that the incidents of trees downs, power lines affected, branches downs, were escalating, and we were going back to clear roads that we had already cleared in the past. We were also having to wait on the power companies to get to different roads before our crews were able to clear trees. The power companies were also struggling with this, as our crews reported that on Dillard Road, they watched a power company put up the same line three different times because it kept being knocked down by trees. The power company eventually pulled off of that road and fixed the line the next day. Our crews were wasting time and energy and were in danger of being injured by falling trees, so we made the decision to keep an emergency crew out to respond to life-threatening events, but to get the majority of our crews some rest so we could track the event in a coordinated manner the following morning. And the following morning, we had an all-metro staff meeting to coordinate the response, and the crews did an amazing job and were able to do an incredible amount of work to get the roads open. Now, I would like to show you a tool that we are using. This is the first time that we've tracked an event using the WORKS, and this is a Weather Event Response Coordination System. This system was developed in-house by the IS Department with input from our road maintenance leadership. The way it works is that we get calls in the EOC and are able to geolocate the incident on a map. The software will then send out emails to the designated list of individuals so they're aware of the incident. The supervisor can see in the field using iPads and coordinate with their crews, and they see this real-time when this is happening, so they can see as another road is being closed. As you look at the system... First of all, this is a picture of what's out there right now. This is live. So the green are areas that we have handled, the orange are trees that are partially obstructing a roadway or other events that are upstrucking a roadway, and the red are areas where roadways are blocked. So you can see how this event has clustered around the metro area. So this can also work in the other direction, however. This allows supervisors to come up upon events, geolocate the tree, take pictures of it, and post it real-time so that we in the EOC can see what they're seeing. It also allows us the ability to right-size the crews that go out. We see where the clusters are happening, and we can coordinate the response with the road crews. We learned a lot of lessons with our first use of the WORKS system this time, but all in all, this has been a huge success. Again, it was developed in-house by our IS Department and with participation from our road leadership. Various hardest hit for us have been in and around the metro area, including River Road, Santa Clara, the Fox Hollow, Dillard Road areas, and west and southwest of the metro area, including Bailey Hill, Gimble Hill, Ham Road, Crow Road, Territorial Highway, and the Manita area. The Markola, McKenzie, and Oak Ridge areas were not as hard hit, but we did get isolated calls in those areas as well. We have all of our main roads open at this time unless we're waiting on the power company to clear lines, and we're still hearing reports of trees coming down. We're working to clear the site roads, but we have the same caveats. If there are live power lines, we're not able to clear those right now. As long as this event doesn't get its second wind, we ought to be able to have all of the routes cleared within a couple of days, as long as the power company is able to get in there in front of us. Our next step will be to do a preliminary damage assessment to see whether or not the event meets the criteria for FEMA assistance, but honestly, we feel certain that we're going to meet that threshold. I also want to thank our partners real quick and dispatch who have done a phenomenal job in helping us throughout this event, and our internal dispatches as well. Jen Powell, Dina Macon, Cara Jors, and Beth Stevenson all worked long hours to make sure that we could handle all of the calls. The power companies coordinated with our teams incredibly well. Eugene, Springfield, and ODOT crews were great partners in this event all the way through. In any event, we can do things better, and we're going to be doing an after-incident review of this event as well, but all in all, I think our crews have done a tremendous job, and I'm incredibly proud of the work that they've done. While roads are the biggest areas hit, we've also been hit in parks, and I can give you an update on parks here.
So this is where I pick up and kind of continue the situation assessment for the entire county and what we're facing. One of the things I'd like to point out on the WORKS application, can you zoom out just a little bit? I'd like to point out that all of these trees down are on the 200 road miles that Lane County services in the metro area. This does not show what Eugene has dealt with themselves. This does give us an opportunity to think about that and perhaps get an opportunity with Eugene for them to start populating their information into this system. Oh, I actually wanted to zoom in, I said that wrong.
Is it good?
Yeah, sorry. Because I think it's fascinating to see that if that's the county roads within the metro area, you can only imagine what it looks like for the city of Eugene and what they're facing. Now, as an Emergency Manager, one of the things that I am most concerned about, as well as many others around me, is the power outages. And let's talk about that. We are having an unprecedented number of power outages. At this time, across all six utilities in Lane County, the count is at least 32,000 people have been without power at some point. Right now, the latest estimate that I got from E-Web this morning just before this meeting was that the number had grown to 20,000. The initial number was 11,000, then it went to 17,000, and now we're being told that the number is 20,000. EPUD estimates that they have 7,000 customers without power. Cottage Grove, Pleasant Hill, Markola, Dexter, Springfield, and Fall Creek areas are out of power. Many are due to downed lines on the Bonneville Power Administration system. Lane Electric, they have a fascinating interactive map that you might want to take a moment to look at on your own. They have over 4,300 people without power. SUB's estimate is at 250, Blackwood Lane, none reported, and Central Lincoln PUD, none reported. Now, the good news for Central Lincoln PUD, the fact that they don't have any power outages, they have been on mutual aid agreement with E-Web. So E-Web, in addition to their own crews, they have contracted with six outside agencies to be assisting with this. Now, where it gets dicey is E-Web is telling us that it's going to take five to seven days for all these systems to come back online. The other smaller utilities are not committing to any type of timeline. Where that becomes problematic is in days five, six, and seven, many of the people that are still without power are starting to face a crisis. They're, generally speaking, any one of us could probably get by for three days pretty comfortably if we had some type of emergency, just by virtue of going to the store. Let's say we're not preppers, right? The average person can get by for about three days. We don't know if the people that are going to be without power are preppers. Did they think about this? Did they see it coming? So this means that we're going to have pockets spread throughout all of Lane County of people that are still without power, and their resources are going to be running thin. Resources not only for their families, but many people have livestock or their pets. And in 2014, we activated the fire departments, and they were able to open up their potable water to people who wanted to come by and fill up huge gallons of water to feed their livestock. So we don't know, we feel that a crisis is looming, but we don't know yet what that crisis is going to look like. The other thing to note is that many of our vulnerable populations, you have people that are seniors and disabled, their care providers are impacted by this event. A good example is we checked in with senior and disabled services to find out how is the care going for their clients, found out that senior and disabled services, they closed down for the day, just like everybody else. Meals on Wheels was not able to deliver meals. This is a red flag for us in the Emergency Management community. That's because we know that these are the people that are the weakest among us, or the most vulnerable among us, and we've got to figure out a way to reach out to them, communicate with them, because they're unlikely to call 911. They're not going to view their situation necessarily as life-threatening, but it is a crisis, and so we've got to bridge that gap. I want to talk about for a minute what the Chief Deputy and I learned yesterday with a visit to E-Web. They were very gracious in allowing us to come in and get an in-person briefing. I felt that was necessary because of the magnitude of outages that we are experiencing. What we've learned, and the reason it takes so long, is the first thing they do is they render safe, they assess the situation, they triage it, and then they restore. And as you might imagine, they've triaged to bring as many customers online at one time as they can. So again, they're going to be focusing on the densely populated areas, bringing those systems up over the next five to seven days, and that's where my theory is, based on both experience and just kind of plain logic, we're going to have a lot of isolated people out there in the county scattered throughout, because that's what E-Web explained, but that's, I'm sure, the same way that Lane Electric and EPUD operate as well. Resources that are on standby, I'm working very closely with the city of Eugene. I've asked them to seriously consider, and they have on their own, as well as in cooperation with me, to consider leaning forward. Go ahead and get a phone bank staff for this Sunday so that we can give an alternate phone number for people to call other than 911, so that they can call in with any of their crisis needs. We've already worked with Red Cross. They have Spencer Butte Middle School on standby. They don't have it totally confirmed, but they have a tentative confirmation that will probably get finalized by the end of the day today. So Spencer Butte Middle School has capacity to house 100 people if we find that we need to start putting, moving people to shelters. We have the community organizations assisting in disaster. This is a new group that was formed about a year ago. It's comprised of nonprofit organizations. We reached out to them and asked them to put their social service agencies on standby in case we have any humanitarian needs that emerge from this. And I put a call in to, or a text into our SAR manager this morning, asking him to put some volunteers on standby over the weekend in case we need to staff a phone bank for people in need out in the county. So let's talk about, first of all, do you have any questions about the situation at large before I go into the role or the purpose of the declaration?
Okay. I'm sure. I'd like to have a little... Sorry. So Linda, thank you. Tim, very good report, and by the way, thanks for the emails and you've done a great job on getting information out from a PIO standpoint. So Linda, you mentioned about the agreements from the different organizations. I will tell you, I was surprised living in the Thurston Hills, the damage is really not much in Springfield. Now, granted, there's a home up where I am, an old oak tree did fall in the house, blocked the driveway of the folks, and they brought some chainsaws in and were able to get the cars out. There was an incident on Main Street, and a tree fell and I think hit a car, but since then, chainsaws were out, and the following morning, the tree was gone. And so it's, so my question, you mentioned 250 SUB customers. We're not one of them. So is there agreements, they say, between Springfield Public Works, Springfield Utility Board, E-Web, where they make... Because I will tell you, I was very surprised coming from Springfield into Eugene and seeing the, even on Franklin, if you were to go Main Street, Springfield, then you hit Franklin, it's like, you know, boy, I guess, I guess the urban growth and brown trees clearly are separated.
Storms really do.
Yeah, no, it was very interesting. So is there these type of agreements in place because of this significant damage that... And I'm only looking at the metro area, let alone out in the rural area where it's critical. So I don't know if you can comment on that or not, because it would seem to me that if the damage isn't near as significant on Springfield, if there can be the collaboration from the city of Springfield working with the city of Eugene, especially on the utility
To my knowledge, yes, those mutual aid agreements are in place. I feel a little uncomfortable speaking on behalf of the utility, but I will tell you what I know from casual conversation, that the utilities do have mutual aid agreements. They're also very sensitive to not thinning out resources of a jurisdiction that has been impacted in any way. So I think that's why E-Web went to Central Lincoln PUD, because they've got crews available. They have not been impacted, so they're bringing those folks in, and they've brought in some private contractors as well. So yes, Public Works, law enforcement, fire, utilities, generally speaking, have mutual aid agreements among themselves.
Thank you. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you very much, and I have talked to a few folks in Springfield by phone, and you're right, it's a major difference throughout the metro area. And I noticed on your reference to Lane Electric, that 80% of their customers in the 97405 ZIP code are out of power. And I live just outside of that service area in Eugene Water and Electric Board, and a pretty high percentage of South Eugene residents are still out and apparently will be out of power for quite a while. So these contingency plans that you, in the role of Emergency Manager, that involve either the elderly or other residents of care facilities, or people served by nonprofits and the government, Meals on Wheels, and other similar programs, I think are really vital in terms of not only this emergency and making it less owner of some people now, but also more in the planning function. What do we do when we have another one of these incidents, or we have the, you know, the earthquake-type incident that dwarfs this one? So I think it really reminds us of how these preparations, and not only preparations in the sense of the preparations that we should all have in terms of our own homes, and encouraging that, and teaching people about it, and having voluntary efforts in that area, but also institutionally, the schools, the hospitals, the government, and not just the county government and our important role of clearing county roads and getting things back to normal, but the life and death situation occurs after the event, you know? And so I really appreciate this, I really appreciate your passion for not only this being a teachable moment, but also solving this particular emergency so much as possible. Thank you.
Commissioner Farr. Thank you, and thanks so much for liking and beginning to talk about the coordination that is taking place, and you have a personal experience in this. I heard, I believe the Sheriff has a recount of the storm also. You live in pantry court, okay? And noted the same thing that you noted, that really I-5 kind of seems to be the area. It's weird. And so, you know, the, but I wanted to point out that, you know, there's an old song from when I grew up, "I am a lineman for the county." Well, the linemen are for the county. The linemen are for the utility round, and we all know that. But it really, a thanks goes out to you for a couple of things. I'll mention the second one in a moment, but for being able to reach out and coordinate the efforts as far as the county is concerned, the concern that all of this is happening. And I know that you know that Food for Lane County has a robust system of emergency pantries throughout the county, from Florence to Oak Ridge, and that they receive all of the FEMA money for food distribution emergencies. And whether or not we declare an emergency through FEMA, Food for Lane County is, you know, they have a mission to distribute food. And while food isn't as much of a problem right now as the chilling cold and the power outage is, soon food potentially could be a problem. And water, maybe less of a problem, but water will also be a problem. But I know that you know, Linda, that Food for Lane County is ready to step up and assist. They probably already have. They operate Meals on Wheels on this side of the freeway currently, and while they do have a great fleet, their fleet is not equipped for delivery in many of these situations. But the coordination that takes place is really, it really is a miracle to watch. And the map that you held right there, that's, I don't think we had that two years ago. I mean, that's, in fact, this is, I understand, the first time it's really been put to the test, and it is being put to the test today. What a great, what a great test that we, not a great test, but an opportunity, a great test that we have right now. The other test right now is the emergency powers ordinance that we enacted just in the last couple of weeks, that Linda, you've been working on for a long, long, long time, just that happened to come to fruition in the last couple of weeks, and gave us an opportunity at whole-day lifetime for us to have this meeting, which allowed the administrator and staff to act without, without meeting the authorization of the Board, which was given through the ordinance. Can you talk about that just one moment, Steve?
Well, yeah, Mr. Chair, so as Commissioner Farr mentioned, because of the recent ordinance that the Board adopted, it allowed us, over the last couple of days, to continue to work to expend existing resources above what the administrator is generally authorized, which is $100,000. $100,000 in an event like this goes really quickly. So that ordinance has been critical. And then, you know, we contemplated having an emergency meeting yesterday, but I think we wanted, we felt like we had the authority we needed to get through yesterday. We wanted to make sure that we were able to present the Board with really thorough, comprehensive, thoughtful information and analysis on both where we're at, what has happened to date, and going forward. I think we also wanted to make sure that we were able to notice this meeting and make sure the public and the media were able to be aware and present there. So I think in this instance so far, that ordinance that the Board adopted that allowed for emergency powers has worked really effectively.
Thanks, Steve. And you know, yesterday, I was here in the morning because I'm the closest to the easiest access in this kind of emergency, the closest Commissioner. I just happen to be able to get down to town fairly easily, and prepared to stay if I needed to, but because of that, staff was everything without really direct input from the Board. So I think, Linda, this is a good opportunity to say thank you to the Board for making this happen. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Farr. Thank you. It is noticeable, driving in from the other side of town, how much heavier the ice is once I got on the other side of the reservoir versus my side of the reservoir out towards Elmira. I think we have about a quarter inch, and by the time I got to Green Hill Road, there was a half inch on defense lines and trees. It was pretty impressive how thick it was. And with that, you know, there's still problems going on. In fact, territorial, just north of me is now closed with a tree across it that fell this morning. So folks, anyone watching out there, still be, please be careful. Any other thing, you know, I have a little bit of livestock myself and had to get out there with boiling water to unfreeze water supplies for them. Check on your neighbors, everybody, particularly out in areas like mine. The power outages are isolated. It can be a single house that's out just because they had a branch come down and pop a set of breakers on their transformer. So you may have a neighbor that thinks the whole neighborhood's out, you know, especially a senior citizen that doesn't get a look out of their house very much, that, you know, thinks the whole neighborhood's out, eventually they'll get power or something like that. Maybe sitting there with an isolated power outage, may have livestock that, you know, they don't have the ability to heat water for and all that stuff. So if you know you have an elderly neighbor or a neighbor with young children, go over and knock on the door or give them a call and check on them. I think it's really important, because I think that's where the initial aid's going to come from, neighbors helping neighbors and sharing resources. I'm one of those preppers. My generator kicked on four different times, Wednesday night and Thursday, where the power cut off just long enough to get the generator up, take the load on the house, and then turn off about 30 seconds later, and I had to reset every clock in the house. But really, you know, if I can impress on one message is, go check on your neighbors, and particularly the vulnerable neighbors that have young children and... and particularly the vulnerable neighbors that have young children and senior citizens. Very important. The question I have for you, we talked about FEMA eligibility briefly in your report and all that, and having been involved in getting the, so you saw river flooding in Mapleton qualify for reimbursement and all that stuff. One of the things that was interesting in that whole weather event that year, was that there were public agencies that didn't understand that they could participate in that, didn't do a lot of good documentation. Is there communication going on now with a lot of those public agencies, like school districts that have had damage from trees coming down, and have suffered impacts and all that, to make sure that they're getting good documentation? Because one of the ways we qualify is the total loss to public agencies from this particular event, and every little agency's dollars add up, you know, whether, and, you know, down in the Mapleton area, you know, whether it was the Mapleton Water District, or it was the Mapleton Fire Department, or was the, you know, whatever it was, a public agency that had any damage, that we could qualify towards to get up to that limit where FEMA will start doing reimbursement. Can you talk a little bit how you're communicating with all these agencies, or starting to communicate on documentation?
Sure. And this will blend in with the next topic that I wanted to go into, which is the declaration process. So is this a good time to transition to that? Are there any more comments or questions?
If you don't mind, I just wanted to make some statements.
Sure.
You know, from, what was it, two years ago, we had the last ice storm, we learned an incredible amount, and I really appreciate, Linda, the focus that you're in, and attention to the long-term impact. You know, we probably tend to focus on the roads need to be clear, and the utilities are being repaired, but one of the things that I found two years ago was these folks, exactly what you said, the folks that are five, seven days out without power, you know, whether they're getting the medical attention that they need, food, supplies, heat, different things like that, that are, you know, they're managing to get by, but then they find themselves in a really, a very emergency situation, where if they can't get the necessities to survive, then they're in trouble. And so, you know, one of the things I wanted to share, and you've already kind of pointed it out, but a friend of mine last night shared with me that he's a volunteer, and he delivers meals for senior disabled services. And he said, "Yeah," he said, "I really didn't have my normal work routine," but he said, "I spent the entire day calling every single person that I deliver meals to, just to make sure, 'How are you doing? Can I bring you anything extra? You know, what's your situation?'" So what's really neat is, is as we're understanding this, we can bring all those resources together so that we can, you know, mobilize in an emergency situation. This morning, I got an email from the fire chief in Coburg, and I think a couple of things, is that we have these fire districts that are out there responding to these individual needs of emergency for personal attention, but also they're a resource to understand that they're expending resources. And as we make the case, after the dust has settled, and we're all back to normal, we're trying to get reimbursed, we need to make sure that they're plugged in so that they can receive resources if it's available too. So I really appreciate the fact that this is, this is much bigger than just the county opening roads, or the utilities, it's understanding that we have people that are potentially in a very crisis situation. So thank you for that pointing it out.
So as I transition into the declaration process, and in answering Commissioner Bozovich's question, I first want to say, from the bottom of my heart, what an honor it is to work for a board like this, that really understands what it is that I'm talking about. And having you share your personal experiences means a lot to me, for what that's worth, as an emergency manager, because it makes my job so much easier, and just knowing that I'm not in this alone is really a wonderful feeling. So thank you all very much for expressing your understanding of the situation. About the declaration process, I'm going to go ahead and open by answering your question, but it's a little ahead, but I don't want to forget answering it. After every major incident, I reach out to all public infrastructure agencies, regardless of how the rest of the state has been impacted. If I have some type of intelligence that tells me that Lane County's infrastructure's been hit hard, I send a message to all local emergency managers, and most cities have an emergency manager. I send a message to all law enforcement agencies, public works, fire EMS, hospitals and utilities, and school districts, asking them to report their damages. And when you see us beating the bushes, it's because we didn't get enough in to meet the county threshold that is required by FEMA of $1.6 million. So what you saw in the beating of the bushes in 2012 that you're referring to, was we were so close, but not close enough. And so that's when we did the second and third round of begging and pleading anybody anywhere with any damages whatsoever, because sometimes the damages might be $3,000 or $4,000, and quite honestly, it may not be worth that organization's time to try to quantify and justify it. But when we're so close, that's when we go out and beat the bushes and say, "Anyone with any damages at all, please help out." And this community does. This community steps up, and everybody helps each other. So in speaking to that event in 2012, in 2014, we had another unique situation, where it was primarily Lane County that was hard-hit with ice. And we reached the state's, there's two thresholds that have to be met in getting a federal disaster declaration. There's the local threshold, and then there's the state threshold. So the county has to incur at least $1.3 million in damages, and that's a per capita figure that gets published in the Code of Federal Regulations, and that's kind of a rounding up, rounding down. It's roughly $1.3 million. The county has to at least reach that threshold, and then that goes to the state, and the state, across all of the state, has to reach a $5.6 million in aggregate. So when all the counties report in, and the state reports in their own damages, they have to reach $5.6 million. So we can't request a federal disaster declaration unless that state threshold has been met. And the federal declaration is the key to getting any type of FEMA reimbursements. What happened in 2014 is Lane County reached that state threshold on its own, and that was a big surprise to the state, and I was kind of wondering, why is this such a surprise? And what we learned from that is Lane County is unique in that our utilities are publicly owned. If you go out to the rest of the state, most of the utilities are privately owned. And so if they're privately owned, the county emergency manager doesn't get to use that as part of the public infrastructure damages, because they're a private company. So Lane County is unique, and I don't know yet how this is going to play out, but we may find ourselves in the same situation again this year, where we don't have enough counties around us that are impacted, because snow, most of them are getting snow, snow is easier to cope with than ice. And so we may find that we don't have a lot of counties that are reporting extraordinary circumstances and extraordinary costs, so we may be on our own and trying to reach that state threshold. We just don't know yet. So let's talk about what we're doing today, or what's being requested of you today. It's a local emergency declaration, and this is something that we don't do very often. In fact, this is, this may be the first time in a decade that we have done any type of local emergency declaration. And it's different from what we've done in the past. In 2012 and in 2014, the state kind of saw the situation, and they kind of took the lead in getting that federal declaration on their own, and we didn't really need to come to the board. What we're doing today is we're coming to the board for a couple of reasons, some of which you have both talked about. Commissioner Sorenson and Bozovich both talked about the impact to the community, and that is exactly what we're trying to do, is heighten the awareness, and also, okay, I'm going to stop myself for a second so I don't ramble. One of the reasons for declaring a local emergency declaration is to heighten the awareness for the local community, so that we can talk to our public, having demonstrated the severity of the circumstances, and say, "Volunteer to your local agencies, reach out to your neighbors." That message gets empowered and strengthened, because we need to be able to explain to the public that although you may be fine, there are a lot of people in our community that are not. And so that's our calling to the public, to reach out, volunteer where you can, check on your neighbors, open up your house for a hot shower, or a warm night's sleep to your neighbors, whatever it takes. And then it also kind of opens the doors for getting the nonprofit agencies engaged as well. So it's kind of an opportunity to mobilize the community to help cope with this emergency situation. It also puts the state on notice. What we experienced in 2014, because we were the only ones hit, it was a long slog in getting the state to get on board with us to try to pursue a federal disaster declaration. And I'm trying to prevent that long slog by sending a message early and often to the state that we've been hit hard. The night of December 14th, I went ahead and called into the Oregon Emergency Response System, opened up a number, a case number, that's their way of knowing what's going on throughout the state. I put the Oregon Emergency Management on notice that I'm coming to the board today for a local declaration. City of Eugene, they declared their own emergency yesterday, they've notified the state of that. University of Oregon tells me that they're going to declare an emergency. They have a hazard map out there. I was hoping to be able to show it to you today, but something went sideways, and it didn't show all the hazards, but they have been especially hard-hit. And so, and then of course, the utilities. So by first, a local emergency declaration, it sends a very strong message to both the public, our local community, and the state, that we've got a very real and severe situation. And then it paves the way for that federal disaster declaration. So it opens a lot of doors, and it paves the way to the state and federal declaration. Are there any questions or things I need to clarify for you about what we're doing? It's a local declaration, and that declaration will eventually, if we can convince the state to do some type of federal path, that will get rolled up into their, the state's declaration to the federal government.
Mr. Sorenson.
Have you been in touch with Alex Kyler and the government affairs end of the county?
Isn't he here? Yeah, we're touched right now. No, I haven't.
He's across the room.
Yeah, we haven't talked yet, so.
I just think that alerting, you know, our legislative delegation, and particularly because of the isolated nature of this, and how even within Lane County, how isolated it is, yet it's affecting, you know, maybe hundreds of thousands of people in some way. The second question I have is that I am a consumer of weather.com, and I'm wondering, for people that don't know a lot about weather, but they want to know how cold it is, how accurate are these ZIP-coded projections by Area Code or by some other means? So that if people are trying to get accurate information about the weather, how do they acquire that, in your view? If that's not a good source, or if it's a good source, just give your opinion of how people can be informed about the status of the emergency.
Sure. For me, in my professional role, I rely on the National Weather Service, and I will go to their website to get updates, and I will attend briefings. What I have learned from those briefings is that the radar here in our section of the state is less than optimal. They have much better radar, say, in the Portland area. So they do their best estimating. And the other thing I've learned is that they take, whatever the meteorologist is that's on assignment, looks at the radar, and he interprets it and gives his forecast. Having learned that and understanding that, my advice to the public is to compare two or three different weather service forecasts, because we know the radar isn't the best here, and if you compare three or four, or two or three different services, then you've gotten the opinion of two or three different meteorologists interpreting the data. So that's kind of a long-winded way to say there's really no sure way to get a super accurate reading. For example, when I was in a community meeting up towards Pleasant Hill, oh gosh, I want to say a year and a half ago, some of the local farmers, there were a couple of farmers there, they said, "We have our own weather system on the top of our barn, because that's the only way we can get an accurate read of whether or not we're going to have a frost or a freeze to protect our crops," because they can't rely on what the weather services are putting out there. So that's not an easy question to answer, but I'll tell you what, they get pretty close. I won't ever say they're wrong, but I'll say they might be off. They might be off in terms of timing and severity, but they're not necessarily off on what's going to impact us. So it's still a reliable resource, but I don't think we have the technology yet to really drill down to the level that people would really like to know more.
Mr. Bozovich.
Thank you. The only question I have is, the board order has a blank in the dollar amount for what we're authorizing the county administrator. Do you guys have a figure that you want us to put in there? You know, that's...
Blank sign check is okay, right?
Yeah. I assume that we need to actually have a dollar amount in there, so that's what, so is there a figure you guys want us to put in that, in our motion?
For road department purposes, we're thinking $500,000.
Okay. And that's all that we would need. This is really, for Lane County, this is a public works emergency. So I would just defer to Director Elsie.
I'm going to look across the way to your boss and wonder if he's having to put anybody on overtime just to close roads and stuff like that, like the clerks I ran into across Clear Lake Wednesday evening, and a few other places.
This has actually been a very limited impact on our heavy control environment. There was a lot of assisting, I don't know if it was temporary, but there's not, this is not a crash, vehicle crash event, just the nature of it. So it's walk roads that, once they get flagged and signed, there's not a lot of impact in Sheriff's Office and so on.
Okay. So as whoever ends up making the motion, we just need to mention $500,000 under Item 3. Other questions? Linda, did you have more?
No. That concludes my presentation. I just want to make sure you feel like you have good situational awareness about what's happening in the county, at least at this point, and then make a formal request that you declare a local emergency for Lane County.
Mr. Bozovich, would you like that?
Sure. So I'd like to move approval of Order Number 16121601 in the matter of declaring a local emergency as a result of the December 14th, 2016 ice storm. And we are going to recognize that a local emergency exists throughout all of Lane County, that all local resources are being expended, and are insufficient to respond to the situation. The county administrator is authorized to spend $500,000 in responding to the effects of the severe ice storm, and the declaration of local emergency shall remain in effect for 14 days.
Second. Is it discussion? Mr. Sorenson.
When we were talking about our ordinance a few weeks ago, one of the questions I have is about if there's any geographic area that is covered by the motions and orders that we would be passing. So is that something where we're saying county-wide, here is this emergency? Or are we saying, within the county, there are significant parts of the county that governed by this emergency?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I haven't really thought about yet. I typically will say all of Lane County, so if we find ourselves again in that situation that we did in 2012, where we've got to beat the bushes, and get people to contribute their damages and their costs, then we haven't precluded anybody from doing that, even though we really wouldn't be, but, you know, it gets a little more complicated. So my general answer is that we do it for all of Lane County, but I suppose we could leave that open for discussion for others, or your decision.
Go ahead, Tim.
One of the things I'd like to point out is that this event isn't done unbolted yet, so I would not want to geographically constrain this.
I agree that in this instance, we shouldn't geographically constrain it, but I would just say, for purposes of, since this is our first one since we passed our ordinance, we ought to think about that, because of the breadth of things that could be an emergency, and if it's weather, and it's very finite into, which we believe currently, and as Tim might point out, it's evolving, but we might want to think about how to geographically tailor any emergency declarations.
You know, that's a very good point, because last... You know, that's a very good point, because last year, we could have done that with the landslide that occurred on the coast. We could have said the area is restricted to the Mercer Lake development in Florence, and I would have felt very comfortable doing that, because everyone else in Lane County was saying this was a storm as usual. So your point is well taken and definitely something that you should bring up again.
And since you referred to the Lane Electric map, and I looked at it, there are areas east of where Commissioner Lykan lives in the Lane Electric Service area where there are hundreds of customers and none are without power.
Right.
And that's on the east side of his, where he resides in Springfield. And similarly, it doesn't have my neighborhood where none of the people on my street have power and haven't had since Wednesday night. In the 97405 zip code of Lane Electric Service territory, which is just south of me, it's 80% of those customers are out of power. So, you know, I think that since we're using the emergency ordinance authority, and again, I wouldn't say, "Oh, let's not do that now. Let's stop and think about how we could define this." I would just say in the future, we might want to consider in the order that you are working off of, that you include a geographic component in it so that it's something to think about, you know, each time.
And Chair Stewart, if I could, I think there's a little confusion with Steve Dengel, County Council. I don't think that this is, at least the way I read the order, this is not, we are not technically invoking the ordinance and all of those emergency powers. This is just a declaration as a precursor for the fund, which is different. Is that right, Ms. Cook?
Although, Steve, the criteria for invoking the emergency ordinance is that there be a declaration in place. And so I think what Commissioner Sorensen is recognizing here is, okay, we now have an emergency declaration in place, which means that has opened the door for invoking those emergency powers.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to, well, I think that they need to make specific different declarations if they're going to authorize people to use those powers that are in that ordinance that we adopted. I don't think that this meets, I don't think they made the necessary binding.
Okay.
And I didn't understand that was the purpose of this declaration.
Okay, so Steve, I think this warrants more conversation, because when we're faced with an emergency, we don't have the luxury of time for multiple emergency board meetings. And so I really think we need to be thinking about how we're going to be streamlining the process of making emergency declaration and invoking those powers. I don't know that we can make that, I don't know if this is the right time to have that discussion or make those decisions, but I would really request that we try to make this as streamlined and uncomplicated as possible. And at some point, we're just going to have to perhaps describe a policy. Maybe we have a policy with protocols and procedures for when those special powers get invoked, but I really would not want to have to tie it to a second board declaration.
I understand. I'm just going by what our ordinance.
What are you referring to? Do you have something, a specific line that you're referring to?
Yes, yes.
What is it?
The board has to make a finding that there's been a disaster defined in 20.010, which concludes that the county no longer has the ability to respond to the disaster with its own resources and needs, you know, to get outside resources.
That is what we're doing today.
That's in line two, at least the outside resources. It doesn't refer to the actual code section, though, defining a disaster, but we are saying that we have insufficient local resources.
Okay, well, then I guess what I would say is I would amend the order specifically reference, because you're including, this is just maybe a miscommunication, I understood from the conversation yesterday that this was just a precursor to the financial thing. If you want to invoke this, I would specifically reference that you made the necessary findings under 20.010, because there are a broad range of, as you know, authorities that comes with this.
Okay, I think that's a reasonable request. Do you want to modify the board order before the board signs it? I mean, I guess I'll turn it over to you, to others for process here.
I think that the board can simply modify the motion and then it's in a word format. I think it can be pretty easily modified.
It's really easy.
It just basically says the findings can go to lane code 20.010, and that the board is invoking that ordinance and all the powers and authorities pursuant to it.
Hold on, though. I think we need to say they can, they have the option of invoking it, because in the interest of the public, we don't want them to think that now we are carte blanche invoking all of those powers, because we're not. It's a menu of powers that we can choose from. So we need something in the language that says we are invoking the ordinance that leaves the option open for invoking those powers.
Well, and I was trying to address your concern about multiple, multiple readings in terms of, I don't think the order, because what it is, specifically under it, that they delegate the authority to the county administrator and list all those things. And I think that's to address the concern that you have, so that you don't have to bring the board back for every single one of the powers that want to be invoked. But if the board wants to limit it, they can certainly do that.
It's not a matter of limiting, it's a matter of granting authority to exercise as needed. So.
That's the way the ordinance reads right now under 20.035 powers. So it says, once the disaster is declared, they are delegating to the county administrator and then lifts off all of those powers that are pursuant to that.
That may be invoked, that not, I just don't want the public to think that because we've made this emergency declaration, we're now going to go out and willy-nilly implement curfews. We don't need to do curfews.
I don't think that that's the case.
Okay.
I think that if we just reference the ordinance as recommended, that gives the flexibility to the administrator to implement as needed.
It doesn't matter where we reference it, but under three after the word authorized, and administrator's authorized as 20.010.
Okay. Do we want? So as the maker of the motion, what I would like to amend my motion that item one under the there first, under the there four says that a local emergency exists as defined in lane code 20.010 throughout all of Lane County, and then down in item three, that the county administrator is authorized under lane code chapter 20 to spend $500,000 in responding, up to $500,000 in responding. So that in, one, we've said the emergency meets the definition, two, we've actually referenced lane code chapter 20 in that authorization, because those powers are there. So the maker, are you all right with those?
Steve? Yeah, that's mine.
Second question.
So Mr. Mark Haskin, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, after you vote, I'll just, I'll have a question about how you'd like to receive ongoing update information.
The only thing I would like to mention, and I, something I mentioned earlier, and I appreciate the fact that you stated your honor to work for a board, but frankly, I think it needs to be reversed. You know, being a mayor or commissioner doesn't identify who I am. I'm a Lane County resident. That's first and foremost. And so I appreciate the accolades, but the reality is, I look at yourself, Tim, the sheriff, I look at our entire staff, and I look at them. I came here, stopped in here yesterday, and look at our amazing staff, the work they've been doing here, it's been, was amazing. And, you know, from my perspective, I'm Debbie's husband, I'm Zach and Dave's dad, I'm a neighbor, and I think Jay said it perfectly, things are in trouble, we're out to help each other. And so while I appreciate that, I think it needs to actually, the accolades need to go to you, Tim, Steve, the entire staff here at Lane County, and I think he's done an incredible, yeoman's job. I saw what you did two years ago when we went through this, or I think it was two years ago when we went through this, and looking at what you're doing today, and I'm, when I think about the resources, I wish we had significantly more resources, but I look at what has gone on with staff, and Tim, you mentioning people getting off work, what can we do to help? I think that lays it perfectly, really, what Lane County's all about. So this is to all of you. Thank you for your incredible work as a commissioner. It's proud to say we represent Lane County, but I'm more proud to say we have incredible staff here working on behalf of the citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Far.
Thank you. And Arnot, I'd like to add specifically to Local 626, that men and women who are operating equipment out there are actually doing the work that we can watch and authorize and hope that they do it well, knowing that they do it well. Can you pass that along directly to the ranking panel members of 626?
They will appreciate it.
And the other thing, Linda, we're going to pass this unanimously, as Commissioner Bozovic read it and amended it, but could you give us a quick bullet point? What does this mean? This is going to last a few days. I'm looking at a weather forecast on my Weather Channel app here, and it's going to be sub-freezing for a number of days to come, down into the 20s until Sunday, most certainly. So things are going to be happening. There's going to be a progression. Once we declare this, what is the progression that occurs after this? What can I report?
We're basically saying that an emergency exists and is expected to continue for another 14 days minimum. I mean, we know that we're going to be under emergency conditions for a minimum of 14 days, and that public work crews are going to be doing their jobs. We're going to be looking after the folks that are without power, and it may rise to the level of requesting the state make a federal disaster declaration.
And that's what I'm digging for, is after we've declared this, the next step would be the state, us requesting the state, and then they make a request of the federal regarding a federal disaster.
Right, and I did reach out to the state to find out if they have any updates yet from anyone statewide. So I will just check my email really fast in case I have some late-breaking news, but, because I kind of hinted that we're looking for a federal disaster declaration. Can you give me an update on what's happening statewide? And I may not get lucky, but I'll just see if I have anything in my inbox this morning.
And as you look for that, we're declaring this, we're making this declaration today, so the next step would be the state makes a request of the FEMA for federal disaster recognition.
Okay.
At that point, a different level of resources kick in.
Right, okay. So this underscores the, I did get an email back, an email response back, and this underscores the importance of what we're doing today in kind of a twisted way. Linda, at this point, I am not hearing any jurisdictions other than Lane County and the city of Eugene being impacted by this storm. What he's, what basically that is telling us is that we're on our own and meeting that state threshold, we will likely be on our own. At this point, it appears that way. And by virtue of us having, you know, declaring this local emergency, when we send it to the state, they will have been duly notified early on in the storm event that we may be requesting that they go ahead and do, you know, I don't want to get into procedural talk, but then they come in and they start doing their damage assessments in an official capacity, and they bring FEMA in to do a more detailed assessment. So.
The fact that we're isolated on this, more or less isolated, does that diminish our possibility of receiving the FEMA assistance?
It does, and it increases my workload of going to beat the bushes to make sure we're getting everybody contributing what their costs and damages are.
Can I just send a message to move Lane County out? I would expect they'll beat the bush to make sure that this rises to the level of federal assistance.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for that explanation. I'm clear on that. Commissioner Sorensen.
I did my part and brought an eWeb commissioner to the meeting.
Yeah.
So he can add to it. I just wanted to say that what Sid had to say about your work, Linda, we're the beneficiaries, the community's the beneficiary, and we really appreciate all your great work and also your leadership in the state on emergency management issues. And I totally agree with Commissioner Farr about, you know, Lane County has lots of people doing lots of different things, but in this moment, for our public works crew and the 626 members that are doing the work, you know, we really have a lot of thanks to them and all of the great work that Lane County employees are doing to try to help, you know, the residents of the community. So I did have one question about the ordinance or the, excuse me, the motion, and maybe Sid or Jay or both could comment on this, but in terms of the powers portion of it, and you did highlight that, Linda, I just want to understand what powers, at least your, besides the power to expend money, that's the obvious thing, and the thing I think we all think needs to be done today, but those powers are pretty big, and if that's what it is, or is it beyond that? How would you describe that?
So, you know, for me, what we've done is invoke that section of our code, which does grant our administrator all of those powers. But they, you know, in conjunction with the sheriff and the emergency manager, will decide just how much of those they need to invoke. You know, like was stated earlier, we're not going to be declaring a curfew tonight or something like that unless the situation changes greatly and there's a need for that. That's basically, you know, they use their good judgment. The major thing it does is allows them to ask for outside help.
Yep.
And to expend county monies from reserve funds without having to come to the board for prior approval. We've given him authority above his $100,000 signature authority, up to half million dollars to just go out and expend that money without coming back to the board. So that's the major thing I think that we've done.
Thank you for clarifying.
Is give him that financial authority, and that's why we specifically referenced it in that financial, in that part of the bullet point. But we've actually defined the emergency under lane code chapter 20, which gives the full chapter 20 authorities to the administrator. But I mean, that, you know, there's powers we all have on a daily basis, you know, just in our normal, under our normal charter, that we don't exercise every day. It's a judgment call as to whether we actually have to exercise all those powers.
And I think the back and forth between Steve and, I mean, Linda brought something up that I think is critical, and I, which I think was verified, that is, I don't think any of us want to keep coming back here and having him declare emergencies. And I think based on the, just the amendment from Mr. Dengel's recommendation, I think, and I, Jay just outlined it just perfectly, I think that's really what it does.
Well, and I wanted to, thank you very much. One thing I wanted to conclude with is, and this is really for our board chair and on the occasions when the board chair isn't available, the vice chair, and I guess for me, when the vice chair isn't available, me.
The senior.
Right, and the county administrator. But to me, the decision to have a special meeting and not have an emergency meeting was a really good decision, because this meeting really, even though there were a few, you know, hiccups here and there about what we were, you know, doing or not doing or whatever, to me, we got that all laid out pretty well. And had we made an emergency meeting, we wouldn't have had the briefing that we had, we wouldn't have had the detail, we wouldn't have had the lawyer on the phone maybe, we wouldn't have had, you know, maybe not all five commissioners. So to me, having a special meeting, when we can do it, and again, each situation is different, but to me, that was a lot better choice than to do an emergency meeting. I don't know how you felt about it, being the person in the middle of the emergency, but I felt like that was a better decision.
Yeah, I would like to comment on how that came about. My training with the state and the pressure I get from the state is you do it right away. You do it as quickly as you can. And so that was my training, that was my request. And Diana was saying, you know, in so many words, "Are you absolutely sure this is necessary?" So I picked up the phone, called the sheriff, I thought, "This probably isn't my decision." So in his vice counsel, we decided to delay the meeting until today. And what is interesting, when I shared that with the state, they're like, "Well, you all need to change your..." all need to change your processes." And I'm like, "No, I don't think we do."
They do.
Yeah, they have this perspective of how the world should work, but it's not always in alignment with the way the county needs to work. And so, this has been a good learning for me. I've had a couple of those eye-opening moments in the last couple of weeks, actually, on a couple of other topics as well. So, kudos to the sheriff, he made the call, because I was going to just barrel ahead and say, "No, we got to do this," you know, that's my training, but Cooler has prevailed.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'd like to say thank you for those comments, because I was receiving updates from Mr. Elsie throughout the evening, and then the administrator piped in and said, "It's looking pretty serious out there, we may have to have an emergency meeting." I think Commissioner Farr was on the receiving end also, and he and I both responded, "We're ready, let us know," and then, you know, coordinating with Ms. Jones, back and forth, really, at times, it was, we were trying to figure this out, and I really appreciate, Commissioner, that I believe we did end with the right process, and we're here today with a great amount of information and making a well-informed decision today, so thank you for that, Commissioner.
Commissioner Sorensen, I really appreciate, that was very, very good, and I think, Linda, your response was good. I think what happens is the state has, sometimes has a one, you know, a glove that fits everything, just, you know, just fits all and no problem. One size fits all. Each area, each county, each demographic, or, excuse me, geographic area in the state is different, and it's interesting how we've been hit by the ice storm, and Commissioner Cameron from Salem sent me a picture, and they had, he had six inches of snow in Salem. Well, they didn't have ice.
Right.
It's snow. And so, it was just a matter, it was a driving matter, probably the law enforcement was much more engaged, and so, I really appreciate that, Pete. That was a very good, very good clarification, a good response, and I think that's important to keep, and Pat, you're right, they need to change.
Yeah.
Because each area is going to have a different issue that comes up, and I think this, again, just proves it. So, thanks, Pete, for that.
And very briefly, to reinforce your discussion with the state, this is a pretty complicated process that we went through in the last 24, 36 hours, and we came through with one little tiny hiccup, and we solved it at the table.
Right.
So, otherwise, who knows how many things, how many storms would have been encountered if we hadn't gone through the process. So, this is well done, this is a textbook, textbook demonstration of how this can work, so very well done.
Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you.
So, having, you know, been on the other side when I was at E-Web in the February 7th, 2002 windstorm, and witnessed what it takes to respond to a storm like this, I just want to say one more time and echo everybody's appreciation for our crews working out there, and number one thing is safety out there as they work. But just, it's not just the guys out on the road, you know, Jennifer Paweck normally just writes permits for, you know, right-of-way work and does, you know, right-of-way enforcement stuff. She's working all sorts of crazy hours answering phones, you know, people end up in emergencies like this, and it was no different, and I wish the E-Web commissioner was still here, no different at E-Web. You know, we had people that normally were taking, you know, customers' bills in and out, answering phones, and taking, you know, information down about who was out of power where, and where there was a downed power line, or where there was something dangerous. Everybody rises to the occasion and changes their jobs when we have an emergency like this, and I just want to appreciate, not only those guys, it's their normal job to go out and clear trees off the road, but also the folks in the office that suddenly have to change their hat and work all sorts of crazy hours when their family might be actually at home without power, you know, and wondering, and trapped by trees and whatever else. So, I really appreciate our workers. You know, and just in, you know, update-wise, and to answer a little bit of Commissioner Lichten's question about sharing resources, E-PUD's gone from 6,600 homes out of power down to 1,000, according to their recent release that came out while we were meeting here. Only 1,000 homes, not customer, not people, but 1,000 homes, which, you know, if you think about how many people that is, are still without power, and this is how many days, you know, almost 48 hours later, and they have gotten help from Blatchley Lane Call.
Okay.
Because Blatchley Lane didn't have quite as severe of outages, so they've had one crew from Blatchley helping them restore power to their customers. So, there is local sharing of resources if they're available, and it's one of those things, until SUB actually says there they have the ability to release crews, having been in that situation, that February 7th windstorm, though, SUB was hit just as hard. We were bringing people from other states to clean that up, and my guess is we will hit the statewide threshold. Just from my knowledge of what electrical systems cost, the fact that I know that current substation on E-Web's system was smashed, and that when you get into substation equipment, you know, that stuff costs hundreds of thousands of dollars on its own, we will probably hit that 5.6 million in damages fairly easily. And I'm not terribly concerned about getting to that threshold, but I want to go back and reiterate to folks out there, please check on your neighbors. You know, the event was Wednesday night, it seems like today it might get, you know, start melting and we'll all be done, sort of, but there are going to be people that will not get power for up to 10 days, probably, from the storm, just from understanding the way you have to go piece by piece and reconstruct an electric grid. And, you know, they're going to prioritize getting the max number of people turned on the fastest. So, if it's a feeder line that can turn on a whole neighborhood, that's what they'll concentrate the crew on. That line that goes to just the pole that goes to your house may be the last thing that gets fixed, and who knows when they'll get to that, particularly when they're running the crews 30 hours right now. They were running the crews 30 solid hours starting Wednesday night, so then they got to give them a certain amount of rest time by contract and bring them back, to get crews mobilized from the coast and from other areas. It may be a while. We are looking at sub-freezing temperatures over the next several nights and several days. If you have a neighbor that is a senior, if you have a neighbor that has young children, if you have a neighbor that has livestock and may need water, because out where I am, when you're out of power, you're out of water, because wells need power, check on them, see if they need some help. You know, it might just be something like a pot of boiling water to pour in a horse trough would make a huge difference to a neighbor, and, you know, help out an animal survive this situation. So, please check on your neighbors, your vulnerable neighbors. If nothing else, you'll identify that neighbor, and you may be able to call with us and say, "I've got this neighbor that's senior that really isn't reaching out for help and may need it." We don't know that automatically. We don't have some giant database, we're not Big Brother, we don't know where every vulnerable citizen is and if they have power or not, so please check on your neighbors.
Before the bullet point, again, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Jay, for that, please, really, what you say about a boiling water in a horse trough, just little thing, you know, it's amazing. And you live in the country, I don't, I live in the city. My neighbor is a bit of a heat away, their neighbor is maybe quarter of a mile or more of ours, so thank you for that. Just passed along a message I just received from Beverly Hughes from Food Lane County. "We stand by to help in any way. Meals on Wheels is under strain due to the weather and lack of available volunteers. Run dead while, the operations manager is coordinating it." So, you were right about Meals on Wheels being strained right now, so I guess, at the, Commissioner Bozovic, just please, if you're a volunteer with Meals on Wheels, you can get over there, they're short right now.
Any other comments before we move on?
Chair, sir? If I may, I just want to remind that there is property tax relief available to homeowners who have experienced significant real property damage to their homes due to falling limbs, trees on their properties, and for them to contact the council's office for appropriate courts to validate in time to receive the appropriate relief.
Great, I didn't know that.
Thank you. There's no further comments? You have a motion before us in a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any votes? Passes unanimously. President Mokraski?
Just a couple wrap-up comments. Mr. Chair, wanted to have you have the opportunity to vote, and then, just a couple comments about communication on this that I'll share with the board, and then a comment about the decision point to have the meeting today versus yesterday, because I want the board to think about, you know, this has been, it's not a test, because it's an actual emergency here that we're dealing with, but it has been an opportunity for us to work through some of these new processes and really get clear on our, both our communication and decision processes. So, on Wednesday, when the event happened, I was in regular communication with Mr. Elsie. I asked Mr. Elsie to provide the board with updates, which he subsequently provided several to the board Wednesday and I think Thursday. I think it's our intent that we will continue to do that, and we'll work with our PIO and the sheriff's office on coordinating that. It's really important in these emergency incidences that we have clear, consistent, factual information. You know, these things can sort of get sideways if we are saying one thing on one hand and another thing on the other, so we want to make sure, that's why we always have a PIO and a central point of contact for information, to make sure that we're giving good, clear, factual information out there. So, we'll continue those updates with the board, hopefully that worked for you. I was then also in text message and phone communication with the chair and vice chair as it became clear that there was going to be a request for a meeting to be held as the incident escalated there. When, so, just a couple pieces on how that worked with the emergency versus special meeting, when the request came in on Wednesday night, for the thought that we're going to need to have an emergency meeting, and the request was to have it on Thursday morning, which would have been that morning. I got on the horn with Mr. Dingle, and we sort of talked through that, and we both had concerns about both whether or not the incident met the technical definition of an emergency, and whether, and what the actual need for the meeting to happen yesterday would have been, so what, you know, was there a critical decision, the board, I think, yesterday, that was important for you to make yesterday as opposed to making today? And we felt like the answers to both of those questions pushed this into having the meeting today. And the final piece of that really was making sure that we were careful about following the process and what clearly is an emergency, it meets the definition of emergency meeting or not, and that the public has adequate notice, and the media has adequate notice of those, of those emergency meetings. So, just a couple additional pieces, I wanted you to have that, that we really, this is, I think that the communication was good, you know, from a number of different circles, and I think ultimately, we've resolved to have a meeting and the board's actions in a reasonable way. So, if that works for you, we will continue those email updates, and I welcome the commissioner's feedback going forward as you reflect on this, if you feel like there were any times that you could have received more or better information, or in a different format, please let us know, because this is always a learning experience. Yeah, and I might add that once the dust settles, things become calm, I would hope that we have a report that, you know, first of the year, everywhere, whatever, when it seems to work right, just recap what we went through and what actually got used, not used, and so we can reflect on it, to do exactly what you said, make improvements where they need to be made. And also, Mr. Coles, I want to thank you for that added piece today, because I think it's really important to the public. I've seen multiple, multiple pictures where homes were crushed, where trees, I mean, very serious situation. We're talking about, Dave, was the basic infrastructure for people to get back, and I really hope that that message gets out through the media that these folks, that, you know, once their lives get straightened back out, that they need to be with you to get that form filled out, possibly receive some relief, and get what's, you know, available to them in the system, so I appreciate that, Mr. Coles. And so, if there's further comments?
I just wanted to add one more thing, and that is, the Lane County Charter allows three commissioners to call a meeting of the board, and I know on a practical level, the board chair, you know, calls the meetings, and the board chair decides when the meetings are held, and when they're noticed, and whether they're a regular meeting, an emergency meeting, or a special meeting. But I would point out that any three commissioners can call a meeting of the board, and so, briefing one commissioner isn't a good idea. I think whatever information you provide to the board chair, you should be providing that to all the commissioners. Those briefings by Mr. Elsie, which I only responded to maybe one, until I realized he was giving us lots of updates, I wasn't responding to them, but I was, I was reading them, and I think it's important to realize that in the event that our chair isn't able to call that emergency meeting, or that, that special meeting, that the other commissioners be aware of what is going on. So, I would really revisit the idea of briefing the board chair and the vice chair when, particularly in this setting where our chair lives, I believe you live farthest from the courthouse, right?
Maybe.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, that came up in our simulation where, in our simulation that Ms. Cook organized where our commissioner that was closest to the, to the incident was unavailable, so I would just bring that to your attention.
And, Commissioner, I appreciate that, because being in a rural, living in a rural atmosphere, our power was out for about 19 hours, and there was a point where my phone went dead about probably 2:00 in the morning, so my communication with the administrator would have been nonexistent, so I find that to be an important thing.
My last call, my last call was seven or 2% of my phone left. My last call on Thursday was to Ms. Jones, saying I could come to this meeting. So, it took me a while to get that thing powered up.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for all the excellent work that's been done by this organization, our partner organization, our volunteers. We have a long road to hope, and I appreciate everybody being able to make it today and being able to really tell us what's been done and what needs to take place from here. So, I'll try this again, barring no further emergency action, the board will just stand ready to act when called upon, so we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.